Committee meeting to order. You'd like me to start? I wanted an extra panel today, so.
Got it again.
Yeah. I call this meeting of the Lakota Local School District Facilities Committee meeting, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-three to order. Mr. D, please call and roll.
Mr. D?
Here.
Ms. Boddy?
Present.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Ms. O'Connor?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Ms. Fuller?
Here.
Mr. Hefield?
Here.
Dr. Lally?
Here.
Ms. Manning?
Here.
Mr. Sarge?
Here.
Mr. Rubble? Mr. Zink here.
Mr. D, turn it over to Mr. D to turn it over. He's going to be there in just a second. All right, we're all move to number two approval of the agenda, please. Do I have a motion? So. I'll take Mrs. Casper and Mr. D in that order. Discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Boddy?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Dr. Lally?
Yes.
Ms. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Sarge?
Yes.
Mr. Zink, yes.
We move to number three approval of the meeting minutes of May fifth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion? Someone? Sir? Dr. Lally?
Let Dr. Lally have that one.
All right, call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Dr. Lally?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Boddy?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Manning?
Yes.
Mr. Sarge?
Yes.
Mr. Zink, yes.
We move to number four review, timing options, master facilities plan, and then questions. Dr. Lally?
Yes, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Sarge and then Mr. Zink and I will add comments as needed or necessary.
Okay. All right, just to recap last, last meeting, we went over the site layouts and as you recall, we looked at the options about having two new high schools and we found out that through the analysis that the sites really don't fit everything that we need, so we went back and looked at adding additions to the current high schools and moving in that direction and also looking at planes and East Freshman being converted to the middle school. So that's where we are right now, looking at that. We're still looking at a few things with the K five buildings, trying to figure out exactly how many we need and where they would be, that's still an ongoing process. But today we'd really like to talk about timing, just so you have a perspective about timing and what this really means about if we do a project, how long that would be. We have multiple options with different phases, so it'd give you a perspective about, okay, if we start now, when would we have buildings come online and what would that look like? So we can start moving down that process, then we'll come back and we'll start to finalize the provisions about, okay, where do we think the K five buildings would go, what are their tendencies, the boundaries be, but we really want to talk through timing right now because that would drive a lot of our discussion and some things we need to do in terms of any kind of partnership we want to do with the OFCC to do any kind of enrollment update that we would need to do with that and get the master facility, facility plan to them to have it approved to lock in our current percentage around thirty percent of co-funding, so. Felt further to do, if you look in our planning process, and this is not to say that this is it, but we needed a starting point, so our starting point would be looking from November of twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four would be our best guess about as soon as we could be on, on the ballot to look at any kind of phasing or anything for a project. So we start there as our starting point, which it could be later, it could be, it can't be any sooner to be honest, but that was the first opportunity. But if we look later, we'll go through each option and you can see how depending if we start basically a year from now, how that looks going forward, if you push it back, how that really puts a project into perspective as far as the different phases that we could do. So if you look at, for any project that we would do, if we look at twenty-four, there's a lot of pre-work that would need to be done between now and twenty-four to even, even look at an opportunity to move forward with the project. So we'll need some direction from the board of November twenty-four, it's going to be our target date or if we're going to do another date and that would adjust us pre-construction schedule a lot. On this pre-construction schedule, the very first page, you have outlined everything that needs to be done between now and November of twenty-four, if you want to be on the ballot then to even consider the project. So with that, we were asked to look at some phasing and Mr. Zink and I worked with our architect group and we had some construction managers work at it as well, just to be sure that, you know, we have some ideas and plans, but people who actually do the work and do the construction have their thoughts and ideas about what can and can't be done as far as timing. So we use a lot of outside resources to look at the most probable ways that we could get this done. So if you look at the first one is what we call a one-phase option. So we're looking at the different phases here. Phase one would be doing your high school additions, your middle school additions and your four K five buildings, all in one fell swoop. Okay, we're going to go November twenty-four and we're going to get this project done all bid at once. One shows you the total cost that, that would be, that would be sort of looking at the three hundred sixty-eight million dollars to get all three of those things done and just below would be the timing for that. So we want to walk through this a little bit. So after November of twenty-four, there's thirty-four months worth of planning and programming, schematic designs, drawings and stuff that would need to be done. We'd have to go through the process for construction managers in that process, go through the planning and zoning piece. So by the time we're getting done, if you look at the very bottom there, what we call the GMP, number one would be the start, would that be the finish or the start?
That's the start. Guaranteed maximum price is GMP, just so everyone knows what that is.
Yeah, so the guaranteed maximum price is what you would do with your construction. So the project, if any, if all went well, if you, we did something in twenty-four, so we're looking at early twenty-six before we'd even start construction on any addition. So it gives you a little bit of perspective, as soon as we could start now with a twenty-four issue would be twenty-six, we would start construction in the very first phase and that would be the high school additions. Then of, and early twenty-seven, so about a year later, you could start to do your middle school. Then a little bit after that would be your four K five buildings. So just looking at that process and availability of construction trades and go through that process, you're, you're looking at a final completion of this piece sometime in July of twenty-nine. So if you think about, if we go the earliest we can in twenty-four, being finished with everything that we think we'd want to do in those phases would be twenty-nine. So it's a process and that's what we're trying to display here. Any questions about option number one, trying to do all, all three key elements, the high school additions, middle school additions and four new buildings would be a one-phase request of around three hundred sixty-eight million. And that's just ballpark, that's what we know right now.
Right.
Based on OFCC numbers. Does it include anything else that we've talked about as far as locally funded initiatives? That if we want to do anything else beyond just those three main topics, the additions, the high school, middle school and four new buildings, that's what we think that cost would be.
So Chris, if we do it this way, what, what's the OFCC percentage right now? Is it still forty-six-ish?
It's twenty-nine, or I'm sorry, it's thirty.
Oh, it's thirty?
Yes.
Dang. So if we do it this way, then what do we use that thirty percent for down the road?
And that would, and that's one of the things when we go through to some of the pros and cons, there's pros and cons to each one as well that we'll look at. If you do it all at once, really your thirty percent, when your number comes up, would be used to renovate existing buildings. So it would save on your PI dollars to do that. So anything that's identified to be done, any kind of upgrades to any existing building could be done with those dollars and you won't have to use your PI fund to do those. So if you need a new roof at the high schools or one of our existing buildings at Indy or Endeavor, Windout are going to be getting close to their twenty-year roof piece, so you could use that money instead of your PI money. So that's one of the, the, um, one of the cons would be you couldn't use that money to help you build new buildings. So if you phased it out differently, you could perhaps use your, your co-share if you did, we'll talk about the other phases here. So if we did something different where you just do one phase now and look at future phases down the road, you might be able to use your, your co-funding to help actually construct new buildings.
So, but what you were saying, sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry. You said that the high schools would be built first, then the middle schools, then the elementary, some of which would be new, some of, some of which would be renovations. So even in this one-phase option, would you be able to do those renovations with those OFCC? No?
No, those are.
Those would be new buildings.
Yeah, yeah, this number is just your new buildings and your additions to your middle school and high school.
What you, what you got to remember is your total master plan is like over five hundred million dollars. This is reflecting like three hundred sixty million or whatever that is. So this is only reflecting immediate, kind of immediate needs, new construction and stuff. It does not include like renovations that the OFCC is recommending for some of your newer buildings, like your brand-new buildings, there is, there's, and through the assessment, there was things that they said needed to be done. They're again, not emergency things though, so we're counting those as basically future work. So any of this help credit that you could get from these projects, that could be used now to work on those buildings that currently are pretty new, but by the time all this is done, they're going to need roofs and stuff, so there, and you could use that money at that time.
Okay. So.
That makes sense.
So in all of, and I guess I should wait till we go forward, just do all the plans, phases make elementary K five buildings the last step we do?
Correct.
Because that's.
Well, except this one, this is.
We have a.
Right, right, well. What's that?
That's where we seem to have our biggest, not our biggest problem, but I mean, we were, I was in three elementary schools over the last couple of days that three six buildings that are pretty, pretty much at capacity and we keep growing, so, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, and again, if you look at the timing though too, by the time you can even get something to release, some of those kids are going to be at the middle school and high schools.
Well, that's true too, good point.
And our biggest operational savings are going to be in the high school additions. So trying to capture those at the front and working our way back, I think is the thought behind it.
Yeah, get rid of the, the standard, well, one of our worst buildings we know is West Freshman.
Right.
So the sooner we can get that building.
Yeah, exactly.
Done and moved on from that, it's going to be great from an operational saving standpoint and just what we talked about, getting the nine, twelve together, one building again.
True.
Another thing we talked about the last meeting was the actual, you know, hard-to-predict enrollment at the earlier grades, so give us a little more time to see what the neighborhoods were doing, you know, kind of to the north.
Okay.
Yeah, because part of the thing is what we'll discuss here later in the meeting is, you know, if we want to participate with OFCC, we need to go through that help process again and they'll do a brand-new enrollment study. So enrollment study was done in nineteen and it's already, you all right?
Yeah. Excuse me, yeah. Just have to do it.
Yeah. So. So we would have to look at a brand-new enrollment study coming, because ours is already going on five years old and.
Yeah.
The OFCC would require a new updated enrollment study to move forward, so. And again.
I didn't think about those kids being in the junior high, high school by the time we get a building.
Right, and in addition, as Jim said, you know, this is just what we're looking at would be sort of our ask from our community, our, our master plan approvals going to be well over that five hundred million dollar range, what we talked about before. So this is just a portion that we would think would be segmented out that we'd want to do first.
First, okay.
Right, and that's the beauty about the OFCC and getting approved. You can do as much or as little as you want, when you want. Once you get it approved, you can segment it out.
As much as we want.
As much as you want or as little as you want.
There's not a limit on the OFCC, it just went.
It just goes to be a credit for.
And once our number comes up, is there a timeframe on when you have to use it? Or is it just, or they just give it back to you when your number comes up?
Yeah, when it comes up, you should have a plan and you need to apply it to what's been approved in that plan, so.
Absolutely.
And you may be able to adjust it, so let's say if you get it five years down the road and you have something new that's come up, you can go through and ask for an adjustment to your plan and, and use it for that, so.
Okay.
The master plan is, is a living, breathing document, it's sort of your baseline, here's where we think we are now at this point in time, and we get into reality, here's our reality now, we'd like to use the money to do these things that are part of our plan. So phase one, it just looks at a one-time ask on the ballot in twenty-four and it would be for roughly that amount of money.
Okay.
The three hundred sixty-eight, I'm a sense. So the next one, we looked at the two-phase option is where we, we'd break down the projects into two phases. We'd do a phase one and a phase two and look at the initial phase one of being done in twenty-four is like our earliest time and we look at doing just a high school and the middle school, focusing on those two projects off the bat. So again, getting the high school additions done and turning around and getting the, um, middle schools done, so you start to relieve some of your elementaries as well because you get sixth grade out at the elementaries, you get that relief.
That's true too, you get that relief from the sixth graders.
Right, and then if you look, push your K five buildings down the road a couple of years, it may give you a better flavor about what your enrollment's really going to be like. So it delays some of your decisions, some of your ask until you have recurrent information. So it would be a, a two-phase ask, so you'd ask one to do high school and your middle school, then come back again in two years and ask for your K five piece. Again, the beauty with the OFCC and you partner with them to do that, you can chunk it out as you see fit and that's why, we have several options, these are just ones that we thought would progress and, and get us through a, a timing, but you know, if we decide to do one now and wait four or five years, we can do another one then, but we may have to do some updates with our enrollment, but.
And then essentially stays on the same timeline as the first one, just two versus one.
You chunk it out different, yeah, I see that, that makes more sense. So would you still get thirty percent back in the phase two, like of that from the OFCC? So that would still qualify for the thirty percent.
Yeah, soon, yeah, soon you start your first project and you do your first project for a million dollars or more, you lock in that number.
Okay.
You're locked in forever.
Right.
Oh, wow. Well, okay. Thirty percent, geez. Wow, okay. Can't believe it's up that high. So are you saying like the ask would be in two phases? I guess I'm not full, I don't think I'm fully understanding, okay, so that's the difference.
So, yeah, so if you look at the one, you have the two red dots, those would be the ask times. So in twenty-four, then you go back in twenty-six. So in twenty-four, you would ask, we call phase one, the high school and middle school. Phase two would be your K five.
And what's the timing of when our current bonds roll off or is that premature?
Twenty-eight.
Okay.
So that's why we're trying to look at timing and try to understand, we have some stuff falling off, we have some now and try doing smaller chunks, so.
Yeah.
Our ask from the community could be smaller.
We can't wait till twenty-eight yet because we have the need now, but yeah, the way you structure it, okay.
Right. So this could be one possible option as well, if you do it in what we call two phases. Still the same kind of work, but just broken up differently.
Right.
Phase three.
Option three.
Option three, yeah, I'm sorry.
We're back.
Yeah, we'll do, do a three-phase option where you do three different asks from the community, one for your high schools, come back a year later and do one for your middle school, then you wait until two thousand twenty-eight when the millage falls off to go back and look for your K five.
And then you'll see that this number looks slightly different due to some added-in inflationary assumptions.
Yeah, if we look, you know, more we wait, what was it, three, four percent?
Yeah, the next, next two years, we're projecting four percent inflation and then three percent from there on out. There again, those are just best estimates.
Based on.
But that's how we're projecting, we're using today's numbers and then we're putting those inflators on them to try to see how this thing will work out. So as you can see, the longer you wait, the, the higher the cost goes, but there again, you can see those inflation numbers on there.
There's a lot of, there's so many unknowns that it's, it's more of a conversation piece, give it that way, because you know, by twenty-eight, if we didn't see growth, we've seen a reduction, then this would all look different as well.
Yeah, I mean, instead of four buildings, you only need three in twenty-eight.
Yeah, this is all just a assumption based on what we have at this moment.
And bond rates could change significantly.
Bond rates.
Between now and then as well, and that could be cool or.
Or could be the opposite, if that would be the four and six.
A refi, yeah, that's true. Right, oh, yeah.
When you're going back-to-back Novembers, that's to the community as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true.
There's not a break in that.
The next one looks like it has with the break. Yeah, it's two.
Yeah, so, um, and we just tried to.
Sorry.
And we just tried to demonstrate in here that, you know, there, there is a cost to extending out over a few years, we're just trying to capture a little bit of that inflation piece that.
Sure.
You know, what we talked about today, even next year is going to be a little bit different, just to try to capture that inflation as it changes. And the last one is looking at every two-year model, trying to, again, give yourself a little more time, get closer to the millage drop-off.
And as well, we could, in theory, be out to twenty-eight and we could be recouping some of those credits, that would also have an impact on that.
Yeah.
Perhaps.
So if you get those credits before your last ask, you have to ask for less, right?
Right. Do you have a recommendation between these different options?
I, I really don't with that, and, and the last few pages just sort of break down the cost of these, so you have an idea about what that is. I, I really don't have a, a recommendation as far as the, the options. I, I think from a planning and facilities perspective, we, we had a little bit of discussion earlier about different things that we may need to invest in, buildings that are, are slated to go away eventually, but how much are we going to be willing to put into West Freshman and Creekside and Heritage or some of those older buildings we think might go away? How much are we really going to sink into those or are we going to continue to wait and?
Right.
So from, for Craig and myself, just trying to find that balance about if we had an idea of when we think we might be out to the community to approve a plan, can help us plan further out for our PI dollars.
Right. So when, so when, when will we need to do that, the help resolution, if we are going that way?
Well, if we're looking at twenty-four, we probably want to do it at the next board meeting. And again, doing the help resolution doesn't cost us anything.
Right.
We've done that before.
Right.
Yeah, we did it in two thousand nineteen. Basically that gives the OFCC the authority to go, okay, you guys are serious about doing this, we'll invest in paying for your updated enrollment study and any kind of updates to our assessments. Without that, they're not going to do any kind of enrollment stuff. If we want to do that, we can do it, but it'll be at our cost.
Right.
So the only, the only thing that the board had to do was pass that resolution, submit the application with that and there's no cost to us. And on the application before you see, you've got to designate when you think you'd be out of the ballot and based on this, you'd want to say November twenty-four is our earliest or you want to do a different date, but if you put it out later, they're going to hold off and say, okay.
Right.
We'll wait to do the study until you get closer to.
Because we could, they could put the, we could do the resolution, they could do all the studies, we could put November twenty-four on there and then they've paid for everything and we decide not to do it, then we've still got all the information, although.
Correct.
Longer we wait, with the process being as long as it is, it's not like you can pass a bond issue and then, you know, your buildings go up twenty-four hours later, which is sometimes what people think.
Right.
Breaking ground on November the eighth.
Right.
No.
So our recommendation would be to try to get a resolution on next board meeting, just to participate with the OFCC, give us flexibility to continue the home study and the planning and if we look at it, the board decides now twenty-four is not it for us, it's twenty-five or another date, then, then we adjust from there.
Right.
But from our perspective, we, we would need to understand from the very first one, the pre-construction schedule, there, there's a lot that needs to be done between now and then with the OFCC approving the master plan and doing that stuff. And also talking too, just about the value, the valuations and.
Yeah, that percentage takes in a three-year average, so with valuation change happening, in theory, the whole state should be relative. In theory that, you know, if we're saying that.
Right, everybody goes up.
Everybody will, but that's going to take a three-year process to get through and then three years to go into everybody's blend, so that could shift our percentage for a while before it shifted back after everybody else kind of resets.
Yeah, if we don't do it, that's another reason to do it, yeah, I see that.
Can I, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
I, I think, I, I think another reason to at least make some sort of decision is because we're looking at, at some major repairs that have been held off.
Yeah.
In some of our buildings because the facilities commission, or the facilities committee has been working and I, and I think we're at a critical stage right now with a couple of our buildings with some things that happened over the summer with water damage and, and leaks and things like that, that we really need to, if, if, if we know that information, we can see when it might be finalized, when it might be built, but when it might be refurbished and then we can build backwards and say, okay, these are the critical things that need to happen in the buildings because of these things.
Knowing the timeline.
And these are the appropriate levels of repair.
Yes, yes. And, and not say, well, we're not going to put that in there because we're going to tear it down. Well, if we know when this timing is and we're, we're not tearing it down in twenty-twenty, in twenty-twenty-nine, I mean, we really need to make some repairs.
Exactly, yeah. And those repairs are getting more and more costly in some of these buildings. Because, I mean, I know, we talked about the other day, I talked to Craig and he was like, you know, there was a roof that was leaking, but he's like, but it's a quarter million dollars to fix it, so do we patch it, do we fix it, where do we, where do we go with that? Because we know it's not going to be there long-term, but what is long-term at this point? Is that ten years, is that?
Or if it was thirty years, it'd be a completely different.
Yeah.
process for the repairs.
Explore those opportunities of, of, you know, sort of a service contract versus a complete remodel or rehab project.
Right.
Or a roof repair, Band-Aid versus a complete repair.
Yeah, it makes sense that you're doing all that cost benefit analysis right now without, without all the tools.
The surprise on that, you know, we, we have about a three million dollar annual budget for our PI, so quarter of a million dollars is a big chunk of that.
Exactly.
Across the twenty-three buildings, so it means you're going to do this, but you're not going to do something somewhere else this year.
Yeah, so I may have misunderstood some of our most recent conversations and I'm sorry for having to step out. My understanding and, and actually my belief is that we should be looking at the West Freshman building and making repairs right now, this school year, regardless of anything else. And I see that as an appropriate expenditure out of our reserves. We've got a building that kids should, are, I am concerned about health issues and all the rest with that building right now, with the water damages from the recent floods. I don't understand why that's not just a fix-it right now, regardless of any of this, I believe that needs to be dealt with. And I would separate it out from this, just because we have students in the building now, it is a worst-case scenario over there and it needs to be dealt with, so.
And it's not, but it's not just that building, like we were at Adena and they're like, what, is that a quarter of their safe work? And like two drinking fountains in the whole building for like however many kids they have, like there's.
It, 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 it's like, do you, where do you keep bandaging costing more and where do you, I mean, that's where, that's the trade, that's where you're right, that's what you have to.
And this plan is an eight- to ten-year plan, so there's some immediate needs that just need to be addressed.
Yes, agree.
Apart from this.
That's.
So.
Yeah, that's, sorry, I'm pulling my thoughts together, so give me a minute, give me a minute.
So that is the, the first piece that I'm concerned that we're not really even talking about. That to me is not a Band-Aid, that is a triaging, deal with those issues, just deal with those issues.
Well, and I think they, I think they need to be dealt with, they need to be dealt with, with some not Band-Aid type things, they, they need to be, they need to take us through six years, seven years, whatever that is, that's a bigger Band-Aid than, than just take us through next year kind of thing. And we, and we've talked about that a little bit, about the fact that whatever we do, we're still a ways off from having a new building for those students to be in or, you know, drinking fountains for six years not working is not a good thing. So I think, I think the, the Band-Aid has to be much, much larger. Um, and, you know, what, what we've been talking about, because we didn't really have a plan in place, that's why I think it's important for the board to give us some direction on, are we going to try and do the first part of this and then that way we know this date And then that way we know this date is here and we're not going to be finalized for these issues until here. So we know now, these are the things that we have to get done to get us through here safely for students and for our buildings.
I I I believe that that's what we have to do, I believe we have to, we have been playing with this facility plan for years. We we have to start somewhere, and and I I agree with that, that, and to me, that's the best use of our funds that Linda's referring to is if we know that West Freshman and correct me if I'm wrong, that that building, it's going to be June of twenty seven if we would do the first phase, correct? Before any new construct, before we can get those kids out of that building, is that correct, or am I? So working backwards, we then know that if that, whatever whatever that date is for us, and I I could be.
I think it would be twenty twenty five through twenty twenty six when construction would start, and then it would be finished, yes, June twenty seven.
Yes.
And that's when they would move into that building.
So.
Twenty seven, twenty eight, two year.
So we would, so we then know that that is the first time they can get out of that building. So then to Dr. Lally's.
Worst case scenario.
Yeah, so to Dr. Lally's point, then you know, you know, okay, what needs done in that to keep those, that building functioning until January, June, whatever, twenty seven? And so that's where I feel like we have to start somewhere and that, that gives us some sort of timeline to know, okay, now we know to take, we take the money out of the reserves and we, you will then know, you and Craig, what, what can, what can we do that will last them six years as opposed to doing something this year that will last for a year and a half, and then the next year do something else that'll last a couple, you know, we keep.
And it's not that the bandings haven't been applied.
Right, right, it's right, but this gives you a, like you said, then now we know we need a bigger band aid.
No.
Because nobody wants to waste any money.
Right, because now, so, but, yes, because now we need a bigger band aid.
And if he's planning on for a ten and it ends up being a five, that's a waste.
Right.
If we're planning on five and it ends up being a ten, then it's doubled.
Right.
It's going to be a waste, so it just helps to, you know, the valuations to plan, yeah.
It helps to have a starting.
So.
Sorry, go ahead, Julie.
Do, I know you said you didn't have a particular recommendation, do you, Adam, have, or Dr. Lally have a recommendation between these plans of one that you feel is particularly strong?
I I don't personally believe that I have a a strong enough understanding yet of both the financing of it and the and the work to do that. And I'm I'm still working on learning that at this stage, so I'll I'll defer right now at this point and be much more prepared to answer that a little bit later.
We've got a month already, really?
It'll be a month Saturday, so I've got one more day before I have a month.
No fairness, we've been working on this since nineteen.
I'm I'm being on time, yeah. I know, tomorrow.
No fairness, we had a lot of work since nineteen to get here, so to do it in thirty days.
Yeah, we'll give her, give her a little bit of time to catch up, yeah.
And from my perspective, from the treasurer's seat, I just want us to go with the plan that is going to be the most responsible, is going to be the most effective, and of course, when I say responsible, I mean the lowest cost to our community, that's what I've always looked for.
So which do you believe that is of these plans?
Well, until, until we know more on what we should be planning on, because then there's different funding options, there's different, there's different ways of looking at it. It makes it hard to to really pinpoint that down. I mean, if if we said we weren't going to do anything at all, then we would probably be turning the conversations a completely different way. So I prefer smallest, smallest issues as possible.
So that would be, to me, the three phase option, which would be that last one if it's smallest issues. And then we also have the benefit of the rolling off of the millage in that last one. I will say, my feedback personally is that I don't have a strong opinion of one over the other, other than that we get started so we can get more data with the ALP and have the the latest study done and and have those more detailed out. Again, I think everyone, I don't see a clear winner of these, other than potentially the three phase so that we have millage rolling off when the thought would be that we would need additional millage potentially. I think that that's a big selling point to me.
Not only that, to me, on this snapshot, it may look like a premium, but to me, the premium could also be, we're also going to be rightsizing the project as we're going because we're going to have more information after every year that goes by and seeing what's happening.
Exactly.
So if that also aligned by the twenty eight and some of our credits came in, then I would responsibly rather see us use some of those toward that versus banking them for more renovations,
Right.
because then when we're ready for the renovations, then let's talk about that.
Right, right.
Let's go for needs not wants is what I would highly recommend.
Yeah.
One hundred percent.
So the thing about that too then is that it potentially, let's pretend in a perfect world, or that someone wins the Mega Millions, that.
Instant on this.
Instant on this, if I went on.
We're not allowed to buy lottery tickets.
So you could potentially, to pace on the ALP and thirty percent, you could, you know, we passed this levy and this levy, this one may be far less than we think.
Absolutely.
Or not at all.
Yeah, because in theory, phase one, phase two, would it would have accumulated sixty some odd million dollars in that process.
Right.
And, you know, for all we know, what if the, what if the community didn't continue growing?
Right, so that's the.
You know, what if the enrollment didn't continue growing, you know, then it's going to be a completely different topic.
It's. Right.
I know it's hard to imagine saying that, but anything can happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I I think from our perspective that, well, maybe we don't have a perspective, our preference would be to, like Anna said, look at smaller chunks, that's, we know we want to get the ninth graders out of the buildings and to.
Thank you.
So that's sort of our focus to try to get that done with the smallest chunk we can do to get that done.
Right.
Then, once we get that done, the next one will be the elementary thing, you get that relief, that gives us a little bit of time to look at millage drops,
Right.
gives us a little time to look at enrollment, how many buildings we need, how many buildings we need, the size of those buildings.
Potential credits.
So to to me, trying to focus on the high school additions and middle school piece provides us a lot of opportunity, gets flexibility in the future.
Right, but I.
For a a smaller, you know, with the five hundred million dollars, it's a relatively small chunk to get that done.
I'm also concerned about the cost of continuing to postpone, because like I think about if we had moved forward further with this, now we're so overcrowded in certain buildings that I believe it is probably impacting the academics or will be as we don't have places to do the breakouts and the individual work we need to do with students that we can't continue both from a maintenance cost that's escalating perspective, as well as the academic perspective, continue to not have a place to house our kids.
You know, the wild card in this, I might have missed discussion around it, but no one anticipated the state with the property valuation increase. No one anticipated that. And at this point, we don't have a specific number about what impact that's going to have on our homeowners and our business, well, not our businesses, but our homeowners in Butler County, in Lakota specifically, we don't have that number yet even, they're still working it out. I am very concerned about what we're doing to our taxpayers and that this is probably the worst possible timing to be announcing a bond issue. Given, given the information we've just gotten and without having specifics even on how it's going to impact them. So I want us to be not tone deaf, to be cognizant of that in our conversations.
I think.
I guess I shouldn't do it.
Don't take a breath.
Okay, we'll take a breath.
I have something to add.
I I agree, but for me, the worst, so for me, doing the ALP resolution allows us, what, we've done it before, where it comes and we just don't do the bond lever, but it gives us the ability to have the OCC pay for all the enrollment and all the studies. And also, when we, our, we've had this conversation about the property valuation could hurt us as far as the ALP, it could bump us lower, because now we're a rich district. And so I think locking in that thirty percent, even if it's just for the next year until we do these studies, we've we've got to start somewhere, and I think it goes back to also, I agree with you, we don't want to burden our taxpayers, I'm taxpayer. I mean, I don't want to burden myself, but I also think it's the education piece that we've done prior with these phases. The longer we put this off, in the long run, the more it's going to cost our, it's going to cost the district and the taxpayers. And that's, that's a concern for me, is that we, it it could end up being more if we keep holding off. And I feel like starting somewhere small at least with an ALP resolution is, in getting some of the studies done, at least we're progressing.
Well, and our goal is for operational savings as well, so it's it's an investment in the infrastructure to hopefully have savings on the backend from an operational side. Plus, I think we also have to be careful, I've seen and read a lot of things with this valuation change, that because we're not at the twenty mil floor, it's not, it does not cause your property taxes, if the value, say it lands at twenty seven percent or whatever that number ends up being, people will not see in Lakota a twenty seven percent increase in their property taxes. And I think that that's what people right now fear, instead of realizing that House Bill ninety twenty adjusts the millage that's charged so that we collect close to the same amount that we get, we'll get a small inside millage growth, but.
There's still a lot of unknown, I I think that's.
Well, for, for example.
But I think we just have to be careful to make sure that people understand that, because right now I feel like people believe their taxes are going up twenty seven percent, thirty percent, whatever the number is, and I think anytime we can help educate that that's not the case is helpful.
It is very, it is very interesting that if, you know, because we've heard, let's just say, the forty percent or whatever they've talked about, it's always something that you hear if it was going to go up by forty percent and the the costs and everything, but you don't seem to hear if it was going to go down by forty percent, how much the millage was going to increase by.
Right.
Which, the same thing happens, you know, and the same thing happens, so.
It's, 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 it's.
Yeah, and it happens. It's educating the public on what, how it works.
Yeah, it's a, it's just a different perspective that nobody looks at at the other side, so.
Right.
You've been so.
Yes, I think with your point, and and something that I said from the very beginning, this is not the time to go to the public and ask for money. I do like, though, the phases and the smaller phase, the hundred, I mean, although when we look at these numbers, we really don't know if that's going to be the actual number, because we don't know what we're putting in the schools, what we necessarily need, the cost of everything. So I really, I mean, I just, I don't even want to look at those numbers, because that's not realistic, I don't believe. I mean, we can break it down into three, I think we could break it down into three different amounts and start with a smaller amount. And I also believe that I, that starting with the high schoolers would be a lot easier to get the kids out of the freshman. And then, at, to your point, where, from what I understand, we can predict the amount of students percentage wise in high school easier than we can with the elementary school, am I getting that correct? I believe that's what, something that.
Well, because we know what's coming up, so.
Yes, yeah, so.
There's going to be some movement in and out, but it's not as great as at the earlier bands.
Yes. And the way. Right, and the way that it was described to me just seems easier to do that for the community. But I I don't think coming to, coming with a dollar amount right now, because we don't specifically really know what we want. I do like the three phases though, and I do like the thirty percent. So how, right now, how do we lock in the thirty percent without, can we do that without asking for money?
Yes. And that's, that another.
No, I got a question in regards to that, so.
Why don't you explain, Darby's not been involved in one of these, explaining them, and what the resolution commits us to in all.
In the ALP, explain the ALP program.
In that program, we'll pass a resolution, says we want to participate, we'll do a study, and then once they have the approved plan together, then once we've spent a million dollars, essentially, that will lock in that plan. Now, the question I would have is, what if our natural percentage, because that would lock us in, but I know with this property tax stuff, the only thing we seem to be focused on, myself included, is is that percentage dropping. What if we locked in and then all of a sudden our percentage would have went to forty five, would it allow it to go up, or are we still locked in that percentage?
You're still locked in.
Locked in.
It's still there.
Locked in. Raises, lowers, whatever it is you lock in.
Which would mean we would have to look less wealthy in order for that to happen.
And is that, is there an opportunity for that to happen?
Answer to your question.
It just doesn't, we we don't seem to be talking about, because it just doesn't seem likely, but anything could happen, but it just, with the growth we're seeing in heaven and.
Has has it changed from the moment that that the whole process started for Lakota?
Yes.
Has it gone up or gone down?
Gone up, I won't.
At one.
One or two.
One or two, it's going sixty, so.
I think we're twenty eight, twenty one.
We, we started the process in twenty nine, or two thousand nineteen, it's like twenty six percent, now we're at thirty.
Always. Twenty six, okay.
And with valuation rising across the state, you're thinking that's why it might go up?
Well, with the with the rise across state, but everybody in the state's on a different update cycle.
Right.
So in order, that's where it's going to take, and it's a three year average, so if if everybody did the same thing, then it's going to be essentially six years for that to be recouped, for everybody's average to be in effect as well. That's where that, that average.
So what I'm hearing you say actually is that you're thinking it's more likely to go down than up, like we need to look that it's a possibility either way,
Because if we're at the front end of some of these big businesses.
but because of we're being at the front end of the valuation, we'll look wealthier, which would drive our percentage down,
And it'll take everybody else time to look that way.
and then six years from now, everybody else would look as wealthy, but in the interim, we've dropped down, is what I'm hearing you say.
That's what would most likely be the case.
Yeah.
And answer to your Darby's question, you can do the ALP resolution without going to the taxpayers. You have to put on.
Can you explain the resolution?
You have to put on the resolution when you would go to the ballot, but when it comes to November of whatever, you don't have to do it.
Except for.
That's not board approving or ballot issue, that happens, that's, this is just giving this to the OCC.
That's not, yes. And letting them pay first.
They just don't want to pay for things if they think you're just kicking the tires, basically.
They think we're not. And we would have to decide on a date to go to the community.
That would be decided at a later date, yeah. Part of the application is to put a date, you put the soonest date you think you'd be on the ballot, potentially.
Just because they never did that before.
The soonest date for us would probably be November twenty four.
Right.
Whether we go there or not, that's a whole nother process that the board has to decide.
Yeah, that's a whole different thing.
And that's what they did before, we put it in, in two thousand nineteen, said we'd be on twenty twenty, we never went on to twenty twenty.
Yeah, and you just.
We got all the data.
Never, never even a resolution went up for that.
Then your ALP expires, and if you want to go back, like.
You got to reapply again, if you want to go back and get more information.
But is it correct that if we wanted to do something in November, we wouldn't, we wouldn't even have to do anything until August to determine that, to be on the ballot?
Right, correct.
Correct.
So you've got, you've got quite a few months to make that determination before you even decide, is it this year or next for the money?
But here for that. You have ninety days before November to decide if you even want to be on the ballot.
Yeah.
And with my understanding, I mean, we can't do this without going to the community for money as a district.
Correct.
We have to have.
It's recommended, there's, there's many, many, many different options that we could look into, but until you know the timing of things, it doesn't even make, I mean, you, the board could say we would prefer to general fund data, I mean, there's so many different options, but everything's going to have a different impact, and we would then be modeling out these different options.
And especially if, and then just, with the new building, I mean, I would love, we're an education institution, and we should be able to provide a ride for all students to school, and.
Then we will have to go to the ballot, because the cost of that is.
Well, yeah, I think, I think it's really important that we provide transportation. And unfortunately, I think, and I think we could reallocate that, but then we also have this expense, so.
The opposite, just from your understanding, that the, that this levy for building is a bond, and you could only use that money to build.
Right.
And so then the operating is where we would have to do.
Right.
So you have operational savings from new buildings, you could reapply that to do something.
Yeah.
Transportation related.
Transnationalize or something else, so.
You know, the big thing that I, I like saying, yeah, the less buildings, the more economy of scale, the quicker buses fill and unfill and get moving.
Because you have less buildings.
Yes. Yes.
You know, all that stuff plays into it, but right now, we're in a overly efficient layout.
Yeah. Well, and and honestly, the the fact that people are saying that buses were.
For transportation.
And staffing, that's also staffing as well.
The fact that people were saying buses were empty, I don't under a hundred percent really believe that, because that would mean they were only picking up that nobody on their bus route, many children, nobody whatsoever were riding, I don't.
I can guarantee that I was there, I had a child who'd had the bus in high school, and I I promise you, that is swearing on Bible, that there were days that bus left Lakota East to take the junior, the high school kids home, and there were like four kids on the bus.
Well, there's still four kids on, that actually got a ride home, and four parents.
But do you know how much it costs to run a bus for four kids?
Well, let's say.
Do you want to take away some educational things, because so that, I mean, you have, there's got to be a balance, we have to try to balance. And most parents will tell you that they would rather that money go into programming for their students and their academics than to send a bus. It's just not physically responsible to send a bus out on a route.
I think would help us, whatever, if we have a plan for facilities, if we know that we're going to be able to reduce facilities, reduce operational costs, we can develop a whole nother plan of how we're going to reinvest those operational savings, whether it's transportation or staffing or whatever it may be, there's could be opportunity, but you don't get those operational savings until you implement your plan.
There's a lot, but.
So there's that.
And hypothetically, let's say that you had junior high, high school, all the way K through twelve on the same time schedule, you know, that four seats might look really. You know, that four seats might look really, or those four kids on the bus might look really obvious if it was just a high school schedule. But if you had all of those running at the same time, now there's four kids that are sophomores, juniors, seniors, whatever it may be, that they're hopping on that bus because it only has two stops anyhow. It's just maximizing the efficiency of all those routes.
And, and my question with this discussion is, is it smarter to ask for a bond and then figure out the busing from, without asking for a bond? Or is it, because obviously I want to be fiscally responsible, obviously, and if anyone doesn't believe that, then. But I think that, or do we want to, want to be able to provide this without asking for a bond and how, I mean.
Okay, for example, what I think you're trying to say is let's say that.
What would be the light, least of all the bonds?
All of our transportation, let's say is going to cost two mils. Let's just say hypothetically, two mils for everybody. Me as a resident taxpayer here, paying the treasure, I would definitely not say that would be fiscally responsible to pass two mils for transportation when eventually this stuff would have to happen to maximize that efficiency as well. You know.
So, so asking for the bond would be more fiscally responsible and then reallocate everything?
Then take the operational savings.
Well, it's going to, it's going to impact the whole operation.
Right.
You know, when, if, if, if we were talking about going from 12 buildings to 23 buildings, then everybody'd probably be saying, well, that sounds like something you guys want to do.
Yeah.
But when we're going the other direction, that's feeling more like a, a need for a more efficient approach and a fiscally responsible approach. And that's another reason why we talked through the, instead of, you know, initially, let's rewind nine months. We were talking about two new high schools. Well, then it was the facilities, athletic stuff, you know, all, all of that that goes in. Now let's talk about additions. You know, what, what can we do to meet these needs in the most reasonable way for our community?
Right.
So.
I think we're all on course with that.
You know, we're, we're constantly getting the feedback and listening to what you guys are bringing to us so that we can kind of audible and try to dial this in the best, best way we can.
I, I do really like the three-phase approach from the standpoint of when we hit phase three, we may not be spending any of our money.
Or it has to be quite a bit less.
Right, right.
Because if you did it all in one phase, what if you got all the way to the end, did this thing, and then we're house poor?
Right.
You know, we've got huge facilities, we're not filling it. That's what a lot of schools, you know, if you rewind 15, 20 years ago when they were doing a lot of those facilities. I know a lot of districts that, that they're scaled for, let's say, a 1,400 kid district and they're now at 700.
Well, Karen's a great example of that. They went from one high school to two high schools to back to now a one high school.
And you're operating that. That's general fund dollars. That's operating too many square footage per kid.
And, and I, I think from an operational standpoint, just looking at it, with the high school additions, solves a lot of different things. It solves issues we have at Creeksa, our West Freshman, that's the older building. There's some staffing pieces that would be operationally more sound. We have 9 through 12 in the same building. We talked through that before. There's operational savings there. West Freshman is one of our larger buildings to run electric and do that, that kind of savings. So the parking lot, everything else that we've got to maintain there, you start to save those dollars once you get, so that's why we focus on the high school first. It makes the most sense from a academic standpoint and from an operational savings.
The domino effect.
Right, then everything else can follow after that. And if you look at it like, if you like the three-phase, chunking it out, it's, it's, if you look at it, a plan over 30 years, you know, it's, the millage isn't a whole, whole lot to get that. And, and understanding too, you're going to have something fall off in a few years as well, so trying to balance that out.
Yeah, I would, I would love to think that, you know, if we go any direction, that you'd get to, to the place where a drop-off was happening and we would be talking about still a reduction. You know, not, not a offset, I mean, still less than.
Right.
What that drop would look like. Or we could even get to that final part. They could say some of these credits come in and we could say, well, we're just going to use those credits to do what we can and we're done here for now. But like they said, it stays on, we're at least not losing.
Right.
The credits for the, the work that we didn't do.
So what's the timeframe, I want to be cognizant of the time, what's the timeframe for doing a triage of what has to be done right now?
Well, we have that information, it depends.
I think she's near for the West Freshman stuff.
Well, we, we've done what came for West Freshman. That, that flood issue was a one-off issue. That was something that was not planned or issued. And all the roof work we, we've done this year, there's no more anticipated leaks for that. We've, how much, how much did we do there?
For which building?
West, West Freshman.
Well, for West Freshman, West Freshman and Adena, we have a service contract where we're doing those needs per work orders and what's been notified to us just to make sure that they're taken care of. So we're starting to see some of the takeaways even on Adena for the recent storms. So those are drying up, but those are on as-going, you know, on a daily basis where we get those things.
So you're saying that the West Freshman building is as good as we can make it at this point?
Unless you want to spend millions, we can do system change outs, we can do whole, whole sections of roof change outs. Instead of, it, it really depends on how much of your reserve you want it to do and for, if you want to do a 10-year roof or 15-year roof and we only get, we're out of there in five years, is that money well spent or not? Or just continue to patch for five. And that's where my dilemma is right now, this, I don't have a, a good understanding.
Hypothetically, what stuff like that cost?
To replace a, a section of a roof.
A 15, a 10-year replacement?
Depending on the size and materials.
Depends on the size and the square footage of the roof. I mean, you're probably at, at Freshman, just the gymnasium alone was around 150,000, you know, as well. But that's something over the gymnasium. So I mean, it really depends on how you would base it in, but it could be a million dollars on that roof. So that's why we're.
For a 10-year roof, that would be a million dollars?
That's why we're trying to just, you know, get a, a, a maintenance plan together to stay on top of those areas so we can patch and repair versus completely replace. And that's why we've done with Adena as well as West Freshman.
Which is new, right? That's something we finally decided to do is get on a, they were trying to buy, but.
Yeah, more, more recently than not. And we've had, there's even some air handlers and from a mechanical air turnover that we're looking at replacing as well. There's things on, on that capital list with that building that we're working on. It's not like we're, you know, definitely not pushing it to the side and not giving it any care and maintenance.
You're still doing what you need to do to keep it.
It's just how aggressive are we? We're trying to be accordingly with, you know, that 3 million and what we do with our capital improvement plan and how we spread it amongst the district and then, you know, act to that high need, high needed areas with, you know, the West Freshman and some of the other buildings.
Can we, can we have a, a conversation with the building administrators in those buildings, that Adena and West Freshman and ask them what the glaring things are that they're having happen in the building and then internally have a conversation that we can then talk to the board about? Okay, these are things that are, I mean, really, really causing issues with the learning environment.
We have a spreadsheet, we, we go through and walk through with every building administrator every year, for capital plan. So our list is about that long of wants and needs. We can just provide that list.
Yeah, we can go through. At the end of fiscal year, you know, this, we start looking at capital improvement for the summer and we can go back and look at that list of what we had. And we sit down with the principals, so it's a work, working relationship.
Well, we have that information.
Show you what we did.
I'd like to sit down with the principals and you guys and have that conversation, just to, just to make sure that we, me, sure I understand. Because I know there are some things that are affecting academics in the building and, and I want to make sure that we have those at the top of the list as opposed to, you know, down the road and, and then talk to the board about that. You know, let them know what, what's actually happening to make sure some of those concerns that we have are being addressed.
Yeah, we'd like to do that before the next, let's schedule an extra facilities meeting just to have that conversation.
Okay.
We're not, wait three months for it.
Because that conversation hasn't came up nearly as quickly because there's such a glaring safety concern there and roof leaking and water problems and all of that. So that's why, you know, that's another great conversation.
If we do that, I would also like to add a policy committee meeting to that, so we can feel a bit of policy from when. I'm sorry, you mentioned having that policy.
And I was going to suggest that we just did the facilities update in a regular board meeting. It seems like since we've discussed it here, we could do an update there.
I, I would just like to have it sooner than later.
I'm glad to do any, any way that, that you need it to be done. I, I, I think that the, the academic discussion on the facilities effect needs to be sooner rather than later for sure. So if there's something we can get done, we get it done.
So do you need it, whether or not we want to move forward with the ALP? Is that what you're trying?
Yeah, I'd like to understand if the board are willing to put the resolution on Monday.
Where are you taking the vote?
No, he's talking about the next, the next board meeting, like Monday's meeting? Oh.
Put the resolution for ALP, no?
We're gonna.
Let's give the board a little time to think about it and we don't have it on the agenda for Monday at all.
Okay.
Then let's talk about putting it on the second Monday.
I would like the community to also be aware of what we're thinking so they have a chance to weigh in as well.
Um, so Dr. Loney, would you leave that in your hands?
Yes.
Chris, is, is there anything else?
Nope.
Yeah, well, not this morning.
Yeah.
I guess. Mr. Zink, anything else?
I don't see it.
No, I don't have anything additional at this time.
Thank you.
All right.
I, I'll throw one thing out for you, just talking about the schedule, just, just to make everybody aware. The, the pre-construction schedule that we've laid out, it's fairly tight to get you. Do you have any thoughts of keeping the November date, November 20, 24? You do need to keep moving very quickly.
Yeah.
I mean, the, I know it seems like a really, really long time, but there are so many processes in there that you have to deal with the state and enrollment of studies and assessment redos and all those things. You truly, you need to move very quickly to get in the ALP program.
If you're sad, if you want to keep this, what do you think the drop date would be for that?
I think you need to do it within the next month at the latest.
We have a second meeting in September.
Yeah, well, that, that would probably work. I think if you get really past that time, you, you, you've kind of run out of time for the.
September 5th is the next meeting.
Okay, and from my perspective, if, if there's no, if there's no appetite for the board to even consider 20, or no rush. If you guys aren't considering 2024 at all, then we just kick this down the road a little bit further.
I mean, 2024 is nice because that's when we'll have the higher, highest voter turnout and so you have the most, a number of people that will weigh in on the decision.
Yeah, but we, we can't, like as Jim said, we can't wait till like November, say, okay, that's, that's done too late.
Yeah, no, no, no.
But if there's no appetite from the board to go seriously for 24, then we just push everything and we'll do it. So it's really.
Yeah, I think we could.
And I would never want to be one of those places that they say are putting it on a, one of the off ballots because you're trying to slide something through and now.
Yeah, no.
And it costs more money, that would cost us more money. If, when you go on the ballot with other things, you share the cost. When you go on the ballot by yourself, you pay the full cost.
Right. When does the, the evaluation percentages, when do those start affecting the taxes and when can our community see the results of that?
Well, they will be coming in tax year, they'll have that locked, but in January.
This January?
So.
Oh, beyond the 25 year, 24 term.
So, but it's still, but, but if it's been in our first year of that, then we're still going to have two years of the lower. But by the time we got to the following year, then we would have two years of the higher and one year lower. So it's, it's going to take in that blend, so.
Do you have an exact date?
Don't.
Nobody knows the exact dates.
Don't, no. Just know that each year, the percentage of the higher rates will be more, I do know that.
You'd be a crystal ball.
Wish we did.
I should have got mine.
Why'd you bring your question?
Yeah, no, I.
Um, okay, because I think if, if, if the community could see the results of that and their tax returns or however, you know, it's affected, then they would be more obliged to, um, pass a levy of a small amount.
Yeah, the only, the only downside is by the time we would have that and they would see it, well, now let's say hypothetically it was 25%. You know, it would be the lower by that point.
Lock it in before that and then just decide when to put the ballot, put it on the ballot.
That's why we talked about if we could get a million-dollar piece or something to lock that in before this increase happened.
Your link doesn't, your rate does not lock in until you do, you have, have your plan approved.
These steps, you have to get these steps down.
Everything that's, that whole process we're going to talk about going through the OCC, getting it in front of their board, getting it approved, that's months and months and months of time. But once you do get it approved, you need to do a million-dollar project to lock in your rate. So if you don't do, if we can lock in the rate without going to the ballot, we got to have that plan approved and done with the OCC, so.
Yeah, and I'm not talking the educational component, that's Dr. Loll. I'm just going off of the efficiency, the costing, the, the operational. And if you guys remember this time last year, I was thinking, hey, we need to get somewhere closer to the 28 less amount. And then this spring, we hear that there's 40% potential increase and then it's. Well, now, well, now why would I have had the incentive to now say, I think we need to be looking at this a lot quicker than that? It's because of that. It's because I don't want to see, the, the fiscally responsible side is, I wouldn't want to see us now only be able to get 21 instead of 30. You know, that, that's what, that's what changed my mental timeline as well.
The cost of waiting. So you could potentially get the ALP resolution, do the million-dollar project and never have to go on the ballot and lock in that 3%.
Correct. But you still got to have that whole process where you got to submit your thing, get approved and do that.
Right. And then all the time.
But then you could do change requests and stuff down the road and whatever that could look like.
Right.
Yeah, because the, and this is the other thing, we don't even know what this could look like yet because what we could do is, is get closer to that time and say, okay, in support of our community, let's, let's take X dollars general funded into that. You know, there's many different ways you could look at it.
It does say, as I recall, it does say either put a bond issue on or find another mechanism of payment.
Right.
Right, right.
Right.
Yeah.
But we can, we can do cash, we can do cash all the way.
Why don't you, for both Isaac and Darby that haven't seen that before, get them a copy of it so they understand what it is?
The resolution or?
The resolution.
I have copies here.
I'll give it to you. Oh, you don't?
I'm prepared to get that up. Brian, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer.
Sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Loll. Call and roll, please.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Dr. Loll?
Yes.
Ms. Boddy?
Yes.
Ms. Katzberg?
Yes.
Ms. Condon?
Yes.
Ms. Fuller?
Yes.
Ms. Manning?
Yes.
Bishop Sarge?
Yes.
Mr. Zink, please.
I keep coming home with these things.